I'd like to welcome our great Senator representing the amazing state of Montana. Senator Danes, thank you for joining us.
Good to be with you, Eric, and I agree about this amazing state. And thanks for doing this, sharing this information for the people of Montana, for the Big Sky community. It's terrific. And I tell you, this is a lot of the home turf. As I think about my growing up years, I went to kindergarten through college in Bozeman. And in fact, we taught our four kids how to ski at Big Sky way back when. I was skiing at Big Sky in 73 when it first opened up. I was a Bridger Bowl rat skiing a lot, loved it. Then I heard about this new place called Big Sky and had a chance to test it out. And that was pre-Challenger and pre-tram days. But I'll tell you what, we got to love skiing up there and have so many great memories. In fact, my dad, way back in the 60s, and I was in grade school at Longfellow School. My dad was trying to sell paper products. It was like Dunder Mifflin back in those days, like the office. And his boss in billing said, and my dad had Southwest Montana, and says, go up to that Low Mountain Guest Ranch and see if they can sell some paper products. So Dad jumped in his vehicle and drove up 191. And back then, the only, it was a dirt road, of course, a Low Mountain Guest Ranch. That's all that was up there. He pulls into the parking lot and there was a Cadillac there and there was a guy driving and a guy riding shotgun. The guy driving dropped a cigarette as he came out of the car. Well, the guy driving was Chad Huntley, just as you mentioned there, Eric. And the guy riding shotgun was Arnold Palmer. And they were talking about, maybe someday we'll build a golf course up here in the vision. So again, when I think about Big Sky, it's really very personal for me. A lot of memories of growing up. Tony Martel and Gary and I were good buddies. I think Tony and Mark had lifted it one and two when Big Sky opened up in December of 73, literally. And those were some of my Longfellow buddies. Anyway, enough of the old time stories, but it is an honor to be with you here this afternoon. Talk a bit about what's going on from a DC perspective. I'm back home in the Gouten Valley. So I flew back to Montana on March 26th, the day after we passed that $2.2 trillion care package. I jumped on a plane and Delta was already starting to cancel flights by then. I got a flight from Dulles to Salt Lake on Delta. And then I flew that Salt Lake to Bozeman flight, a beautiful 737-800 aircraft. There were eight people on it. That was on March 26th. I got off and of course, I know the Delta agents there, I do that flight every week back and forth to DC. And I said, there were only eight people on that airplane. And she said, Steve, this morning on the outbound, the morning outbound to Salt Lake, 737, there was one person on that plane. And that was a Delta non-rev passenger commuting to Salt Lake. So just kind of really hit home around what we're seeing going on in our state, in our country. Just the devastating economic crisis that's hit us across the board, these layoffs, as we have been fighting this healthcare emergency in the coronavirus and the COVID-19 disease. So a couple of things, we've passed some important provisions that are helping people get through this very difficult time. Starting on the healthcare front, passing legislation that funds the PPE, that funds more testing, more ventilators, these critical pieces here in terms of addressing the immediate crisis, which is the healthcare, the epidemic. And on the other side of this is the unemployment and the economic crisis. Looking at the latest numbers, over 80,000 Montanans have lost their jobs in the last five weeks. 80,000 Montanans. It's just, it's a mind blowing number. You think about the national numbers are 22 million Americans have lost their jobs. To put that in perspective, those four kids I told you about, we taught how to ski at Big Sky years ago. They're now all graduates, three of them from Montana State and on their own. But I talked to him the other night. I said, the all time record unemployment number in our nation's history in terms of people losing their jobs in any one week was back in 1982. And it was 695,000 Americans lost their job in one week, 695,000. We saw 6.6 million Americans lose their jobs in one week over the course of this last 30 days. And so 22 million unemployed nationally, over 80,000 unemployed right here in Montana. We've got this two front battle. We've got the healthcare and the COVID-19 battle, and we've got this economic crisis. What our team has been doing virtually nonstop, and I'm just very proud of my team. Every day they're working these 12 to 14 hours to take care of Montanans. That's what we are here to do, get information out. How does that unemployment insurance system work? What do we have to do to file for unemployment? What do we have to do to get these PPP loans and grants, these Paycheck Protection Program grants and loans? And by the way, that first tranche that we had of the PPP, of course, it ran out over the course of a few weeks. But here in Montana alone, we processed over $1.4 billion. That's with a B. And over 13,000 different small businesses received relief through the PPP program. Now, it ran out. So Congress moved, it replenished it last week. The President signed it on Friday. And this morning at 8:30 AM mountain time, we're back in business to start processing more of these PPP loans and grants. Now, we've been battling on behalf of Montanans a lot of the guidelines to make sure they fit Montana's needs. I'll give you an example, taverns. Taverns across Montana, many more excluded from the initial guidelines. And I tell you, I've been very happy to see the responses I'm getting from the leaders back in DC. Steve Mnuchin and I, we'll text back and forth, we'll call back and forth. I said, Steve, I said, our tavern owners, many of them are excluded from the PPP because the gaming revenues as a percentage of total revenues exceed certain thresholds that SBA put in place. Well, the good news is we got two different rulings that expanded that. So now all taverns across Montana, as an example, there's about 2,400 of them. They employ over 30,000 Montanans, by the way, are now eligible for PPP. On seasonal employees, and this would be very relevant for what's going on at Big Sky. We literally just got this news, this came about two hours ago, is they changed the way to calculate average monthly payroll by incorporating the peak season in Montana, at least for the summertime now. Of course, winter time's a different issue, but coming into summer months, they now can use the May 1 of 19 to September 15 of 19 to look back, take their top 12 week period. So I think if you're in Montana, it's going to be June 15 to September 15, most likely. We now can take that peak number versus taking an average number over the year. That's going to help our seasonal employees here and seasonal businesses. I'm thinking about those in the guiding business, anybody who's got a summertime operation, as you know, it's a short summer in Montana. And we're really pleased to get back to that win here for seasonal employees just today. I was working with Lisa Murkowski and Dan Solomon, Alaska. You think Montana summers are short, you look at Alaska, they've got short seasons as well, and we got some good relief there. Lastly, and then I'll open it up here for questions, also working hard on getting the vaccines and the drugs, the therapeutics needed to make sure that we are safe coming into the summer and the fall. So there's really a two-pronged attack as it relates to ensuring that we are safe coming into the fall. And one is testing. We've got to have much more testing. We've got to stop thinking about hundreds of tests and thousands of tests and start thinking about millions of tests. And part of that package we just passed in Congress on Friday, the President signed it, it included $16 million for Montana alone only for testing. So we've got to translate that in terms of number of tests and so forth. But we've got to be thinking again in terms of hundreds of thousands and millions of tests. It's going to be a very important part of getting people comfortable and feeling safe and secure, especially for our seniors as they think about re-engaging this economy. On the drugs and therapies and vaccine side, I was able to get $10 billion, that's with a B, in that $2.2 trillion package. What that does is it's focused on the biomedical advanced research and development group. They focus on accelerating these vaccines and these drugs and these therapeutics to the market. We think we're going to shave four to six months off of the timeline because of that. I was on the phone last night with Steve Hahn, it's Dr. Steve Hahn, he's the head of the FDA. Steve and I have been going back and forth. Sometimes you'll see him appear with Dr. Burks and Dr. Fauci. He's the bald guy, he'll say, he was an MD Anderson oncology radiology doc that came to DC to run the FDA. Great guy, very familiar with Montana, loves the outdoors. And we're working together to get the best and brightest in government, our scientists with the best and brightest on the private sector side to come together here to accelerate getting these important vaccines. And lastly, and then I'll open up for whatever comments or questions. I was at the University of Montana just last Thursday. It's the first time I got out of Bozeman probably in a month. We jumped in my pickup, we drove to Missoula where my dad went to school. True confession, my dad's a grizzly, I'm a bobcat. But we visited the University of Montana with Seth Bodden, their president, and the amazing work going on there on finding a vaccine for COVID-19. It's not getting a lot of press yet, but I'll tell you what, if you look at the history of Montana, the Rocky Mountain Labs there in the Bitterroot, that goes back to the spotted fever from the ticks way, way back. And they came out to Montana to figure out what was going on. A lot of the scientists stayed here because I think they liked having a fly rod in their hand. And then GlaxoSmithKline put a manufacturing plant right down there in Hamilton, Montana. That's grown to be a world-class facility. They do the Ebola research, they've done some amazing things. Well, anyway, those scientists came up and joined the University of Montana faculty. They're doing some great work on COVID-19 vaccines. And wouldn't it be exciting if Montana was really a key part of the breakthrough here to get a vaccine to keep us all safe going forward? So Eric, there's so much to talk about, I'm going to be quiet. And I'll just say, we are here to help. Danes.senate.gov is our website. Please let us know what we can do to help navigate through some of these bureaucracies and answer any questions that I can, Eric. But again, thanks for doing this. It's an honor to be with you here this evening.
Well, thank you, thank you. And thank you for fighting for small businesses in rural areas. I know they're near and dear to your hearts and that means a lot. And also thank you for your work on the FDA front. I mean, I think that's a huge part. First question I'd have for you, Senator, is being a small business owner and a lot of my businesses that are outlaw clients, we've got about 120 small businesses in Southwest Montana that are clients of outlaws. One of the common things we hear for people that did get money from the PPP is they're very grateful for it, first off. It was amazing that those checks showed up. I still am astonished that it happened as fast as it did. But it kind of feels like it set up a little bit of a false bottom because what happens after eight weeks? I know there's no crystal ball, but it's bringing payrolls back up, but then what?
Yeah. Well, first of all, as you mentioned, there's this backend that there's some uncertainty. And when the legislation was crafted, there was a snapshot in time taking back in March in terms of trying to predict what's going to happen here going out in the next eight to 12 weeks. And one thing we pushed Steve Mnuchin on was you need to move at the speed of business, not the speed of government. We need to get this out in the hands of the people quickly. As I told Steve, I said, Steve, this is not a stimulus package. Stimulus implies you're stimulating a strong business. I said, this is hardly even a rescue package. Rescue implies you've got somebody living. This is a recovery package. I said, it's not a matter of throwing a life raft out to business right now. I literally have businesses that have drowned or 100 feet at the bottom of the lake. We've got to bring them up, start administering CPR. And that was the case of many small businesses that already made door shutting decisions and layoff decisions. And so on this backend that you talked about, Eric, we have to go back to Treasury and look for what makes sense in terms of intent. What we're trying to do here is ensure that we've got payroll and that we've got people coming back on the payroll by a certain date. But the reality is, I think it's going to take longer, especially, I think some of our restaurant owners and others, to get this thing ramped up. I think it's going to be a little slower uptake than probably was originally anticipated. So that is something we're continuing to work with Secretary Mnuchin, SBA on that backend. It's not solved yet, but I can tell you many of us are vocal in that regard on the small business side and more to come on that.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And I'm glad that's being recognized because as a small business owner, that money, you're spending it right now, but you're already thinking about what's going to happen. And you don't want to have to go through layoffs and everything again.
And you want that to be a grant, not a loan, right? I mean, that's the goal here for these small businesses to meet that criteria. Because if they meet that criteria, then that's a grant and there won't be a payback on it. And that's what we want to get people to, we're going to keep working on that.
Wonderful. On the FDA front, and it's been really, honestly, I would use the word inspiring to see how you have all been able to try to cut through some of that red tape and streamline not only drugs for COVID, but potentially stuff for maybe other illnesses out there that need attention. And I guess, what's another learning point that you've had in this process about maybe being able to streamline lifesaving drugs? And I'll give an example and a little pitch. We have a dear friend, Eric Stevens, who's suffering from ALS, horrible disease out there, people in Big Sky, it's hit us a couple of times. And there's a drug that's been in the FDA for years. Is there potential that this might open up other opportunities for things to speed up for other lifesaving drugs?
Yeah, no, it's a great question, Eric. And back, it's been probably about a year ago, we passed a bill and the President signed it called Right to Try. The idea of Right to Try, and I'll tell you, one of the heart wrenching parts of the job I get to do on behalf of the American people, on behalf of Montanans, is when you meet the different advocacy groups and you get to learn about everyone of these horrible diseases. Every year we get the pancreatic cancer folks come back, ALS folks come back, muscular dystrophy. And you oftentimes are meeting Montanans who are afflicted with these horrible, horrible diseases. And it's one of the reasons, and I'm a fiscal conservative, trying to bring some sanity to Washington on spending versus revenues. But one area I am all in is invest in National Institute of Health, the research to solve the problems and to solve these diseases. And as related to the Right to Try, that is a way to streamline getting these drugs in the hands of frankly desperate families. They're looking for hope. You know, a stage four cancer patient, an ALS patient. I mean, I've had just some tear filled conversations with families that talk about where they're at and saying, all we want to do is be able to try it. And that was called Right to Try. It passed with good bipartisan support. So that was a positive step and that was really streamlined at the FDA and allowing a little more flexibility when you're kind of out of options. By the way, Dr. Steve Hahn, the FDA Commissioner, I mean, he's an oncology radiologist at MD Anderson in Houston, one of the great cancer centers. So he gets all that. Now, as relates to COVID-19, similarly, we're streamlining that. I've already gone to bat with them for a Montana group, I'm going to call them EUA, Emergency Youth Authorization, to get the FDA to go a little faster here. And it's an all hands on deck event. It's like the Manhattan Project right now. There's a race, or maybe it's a better way to say it, a race to put somebody on the moon. It's an all hands on deck moment for us to cut through the red tape, but you can't compromise efficacy and safety. You can't. But you can run it in parallel paths and that's what we're doing at the moment. You can start manufacturing up earlier, waiting for the test results to come in. If the test results are positive, we're well down our way on the supply chain and producing. That way we can get to market in four to six months sooner. And that's kind of what we're putting a lot of emphasis.
That's wonderful. Thank you for that. You know, switching gears and talking football, as you said, Cat Grizz, there's this wonderful rivalry that we all love. When do you think we will be back to, as a society, being back in public settings like that and gatherings of concerts or amazing football games?
I didn't know Missoula still had a football team, Eric. I'm glad to hear they're going to come back and try again, if you'll see. That was a great game, by the way. But I was nearly born in Missoula. My mom was pregnant with me, working at the Missoula Mark, putting my dad through school once upon a time back in 1962. So my dad's a diehard grizz. In fact, I've got a grizz mask for him, I'm going to give him. My dad's 81 and they're being very, very careful as they should. But that's a really good question. I just don't know. It's a really good question. I was having that conversation with somebody else today. Will the baseball season maybe be a halftime season, you know, coming after like the All-Star break for MLB? I don't think anybody knows at the moment. I think they're going to let data drive these decisions. Thankfully, our Montana numbers are coming down well. The President has got a plan on reopening the economy nationally. But we've got to do this, we've got to safely reopen it, make sure we take care of our seniors who are doing this. So I wish I had a good answer for you. I hope we're playing football well before the Cat Grizz game, which is always the last game of the season.
Absolutely. Well, one last question, then I'll let Joe bring in a couple of that from the audience, Senator. You know, the term that I've heard a lot, and once again, looking for these good news that could come out of this pandemic, is a lot of people are saying, I hope it doesn't go back to the way it used to be. In a way, there's been this blessing of seeing life slow down a little bit, traffic go away, trailheads clear out. And all of a sudden, it's like the whole world is just calmed down a little bit. As a leader of our country and our state, what type of, or some takeaways that you don't think might be sticky points moving forward as a society on ways to live a little more sustainably or treat ourselves and the planet or our neighbors a little better?
Yeah, well, I think we've all had more time at home. You talk about a staycation, it's put the stay back in staycation, hasn't it? I mean, it's really been interesting. Normally, I'm going back and forth each week to DC. I spend most of my weekends here in Montana. I commute back on Delta every Monday morning out of Bozeman Airport, it's my normal routine. But I got to, I mean, there was something, if there's a silver lining on this dark COVID-19 cloud, I gotta say, there was something about waking up every morning next to my sweet wife Cindy, you know, getting my coffee, seeing my three dogs, and doing work here through these virtual events. And the kids are doing distance learning at the moment. And I think it is calling into question, you know, the hustle and bust that we have every day of having to jump in the car and go back and forth to work. There's more opportunity, I think, perhaps to work at home. I mean, this has been a very, very painful lesson to learn though. I wouldn't want to have to repeat this in any way. But I think what's stuck with me is how Montana's come together as well. On Thursday, we saw that great work being done on the vaccine, the University of Montana. Cindy and I also went to the Hellgate Elementary School. So that's a campus of 1,500 students, K through eight. They're shut down, of course. They're packing lunches every day, the staff are, for breakfast and for a lunch. Because those are students, many of their students rely on the nutrition supplement, actually through a federal government program. But I had to get a waiver for to allow them to keep delivering those lunches to the students to their door. So the school bus drivers drive the routes and they literally, it's like DoorDash. They literally are delivering the lunches and breakfast to the students' doors. And the students wave at them as they come up. It's pretty touching. You're yearning to get back to see their friends. But if there's something we've also learned is how Montanans do come together, the sense of community, even though we're distant in some ways, I've sensed too a way we've come together, in kind of this strange way. And lastly, just the way I do my job, I thought, well, boy, I'm going to be back in Montana. How can I continue to meet with people I always do back in DC? We have Montanans come back to DC all the time. And we have, my day in DC is spent mostly meeting with Montanans. And I thought, how can I keep that cadence going? Well, here's what I found out, is that when I'm back in DC, an advocacy group might send two or three people back for that meeting. Because it's expensive airfare, expensive for meals, expensive for hotels, it's an expensive, it's time consuming. We're doing those same meetings now back in Montana with Montana groups. And now instead of having three or four people face to face in DC, it's 50 people face to face in Montana via Zoom. And we're finding out we're actually maybe more engaged and more face to face time, if you will, using technology. So I think it's an important part of going forward in Montana. I was in the software business for 12 years in Montana, building a cloud computing company. And what we found is that technology removed geography as a constraint. Growing up, like I did in the 60s and 70s in Bozeman, we were a long ways from anywhere. Bozeman was not the cool town back then, by the way. You know, when Brad Pitt came and put a flyer on the sand, we started to get cool in the mid 90s. But back in the 60s and 70s, I had a Browning Silo Flex rod, an automatic reel and a Wicker reels, like a river runs through it. The fly fishing wasn't that cool back then. I thought it was cool, my grandpa, my dad and I did. But the point is, we were a long ways from anywhere and that made Montana pretty special. But it was because of technology and this connectivity, now people can live here and also play on the weekends here. And we're demonstrating that, I think, with what's going on at the moment is that you really can use technology to stay connected. So anyway, that's just a few thoughts, Eric. And I wouldn't want to repeat this in any way, but there are two silver linings on this dark cloud.
Well, yeah, you have to look for them somewhere, but thank you for that. And I didn't know you were Brad Pitt's double in River Runs Through.
I was not Brad Pitt's double.
All right, Joe, is there a couple of questions we can do?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Senator Danes, great to see you again and welcome. Thank you for coming on the show. You know, you mentioned that 80,000 Montanans have filed for unemployment at this stage. And it's early days yet, but has the staged reopening of businesses and the economy been a successful process so far? And what is your position on balancing the re-engagement of the economy with keeping Montanans healthy and safe?
Yeah, I think that is the question, isn't it? About how you strike that balance. And there's criteria laid out where you want to see consecutive declines in the COVID-19 positive cases, which we're seeing. But one of the areas that we've got to start opening up as we think about our businesses is actually the business of healthcare. Give an example, I just checked the numbers here this morning. We have 1,600 plus open hospital beds empty across Montana. Now, you take the Kalispell Hospital as an example. I was on the phone with some of their leaders here two weeks ago. They furloughed 600 doctors, nurses, medical technicians, clerical staff, 600 at the Kalispell Hospital. Why? Because they have a 300 bed hospital, 200 beds are empty and they had one COVID-19 patient. So what we were doing was we were working to make sure we had enough capacity in our hospitals. That was one of the very important criteria in terms of trying to bend this curve, to flatten the curve. So we didn't overwhelm the medical staff. And thankfully, here in Montana, we were not New York. And that's why I think it's really important that I don't want to see a top-down driven approach from the federal government. They can give some guidelines. I want the states to make that decision, even drive that down further to the county level. About half of our counties on Montana do not have a single COVID-19 known positive test result. So what goes on in Carter County and some of the counties and places where they're a long ways, many are not in the surrounding county having a COVID-19, perhaps is a different approach than some of these hotter places that we've seen like in Gouten County. I've got to look at right now, our hospitals, thankfully, we've got plenty of capacity. And that's a good news story for us. And our hospitals financially are facing some very, very challenging times. That's why we just passed a $100 billion relief package here for our hospitals. But here's the biggest hardship, is we have Montanans who want elective procedures. They haven't been able to get them now for the last six weeks. And so you've got people who need to see a doctor and that's another place I think we can start opening up again in our hospitals. I think they will exactly strike that right balance. Safety first, but also we need to start taking care of people now with these empty beds that we have.
Sure, sure. Thanks for that. I have a question for you. You know, we've talked to, I've talked to a couple of different businesses that are concerned that they're having employees go on unemployment and not coming back to work because of the high level of pay that they're getting through unemployment? Any comments on that?
Yeah, well, the federal component on the unemployment was pretty generous. Here's a way to think about it in Montana. Our average wage, median wage in Montana is $43,000, $44,000 a year. The way the state unemployment system works is they take a percentage around 53, 54% of your wage and that becomes your state unemployment benefit. So if you take that median Montana wage, break it down by week, it's about, I'm using round math here, round numbers, about $450 a week. The federal government adds $600 a week on top of that. So it's depending on where your wage level was at, you can create a situation where you actually can make more money being on unemployment insurance than you can staying on the payroll. And that has created a problem for some of our employers and with employees. Now, if you're offered the job back, the way that the laws work on that is you can't keep taking unemployment if you have your job to go back to. And so I think we just have to strike that right balance. And we've got to get the employers, when they're ready to start opening up again, we want them to go back on the payroll because that's the goal here. The unemployment benefit was there to be a benefit to help, by no fault of their own, they lost their jobs. So nobody's to blame, and there's no small business owner to blame, there's no employee to blame. The fact is, we had this black swan event that came in and just cold cocked us, right? Just stopped this economy just about out of the blue. Everything was looking good in January, everything was looking good in February, now look where we're at. We're going to get through this, but I think that's the balance on it. And it's time to start moving folks as they start opening up these businesses, moving from unemployment back to these small businesses.
Sure, absolutely. And we've got one last one from the audience here, from the local business. Since Big Sky is 100% a tourist-driven economy, what's being done at the national level to get interstate travel going again? And to follow up, is testing air travelers being considered so their destinations will welcome them?
Yeah, well, there's not a lot of air travelers out there right now. If you've been at Bozeman Airport lately, we took some lunches, we bought lunch and took them with the National Guard who are up there taking temperatures of inbound passengers. And I mean, I welled up with tears just looking at that Bozeman Airport, who's usually, it's usually one of the most vibrant airports in the country in terms of per capita. Remember the busiest airport in Montana? Again, when I was a kid, the Bozeman Airport was a sleepy little stagecoach place. Now it's the busiest airport in Montana. It's vibrant, that parking lot was empty. And they said they were seeing like 60 or 70 people a day in total coming through the exit, talking to the National Guard. Of course, now they're taking temperatures for everybody coming in. But that's going to be also a state decision because right now there's still quarantine policy in place. If you come into the state, you're quarantined for 14 days. You can't leave your hotel room, you can't keep your home, you can't leave your home, you're quarantined for 14 days. So I think I have to start looking at, when is the right point to start loosening that up? Because of course, you think about Montana, we're very dependent on those tourism dollars and that travel. But I think that's going to be decisions to be up to the state of Montana. You know, when is the right time to loosen that up? And I know they're watching the data very carefully. I know one of the concerns, of course, is not loosening up too quickly. I know our gateway communities, I was chatting with members, you know, in Gardner and West Yellowstone, places like Cook City. They were concerned about Yellowstone National Park having international visitors or from around the country coming in and possibly creating a hotspot there. And that would kill the summer season if they had a hotspot there during the kind of the shoulder, you know, this April, May timeframe. And so that's why they were supportive of Secretary Bernhardt. And I talked to David Bernhardt. I chair the National Parks Subcommittee in the US Senate, by the way. It's my favorite committees I get to chair. And it's very personal to me as we're looking at, what do we do about our national parks? And I know David's going to yield to the will of the local communities. He will. Because those local communities are balancing the risk of possible COVID-19 cases as well as the risk to their balance sheet liquidity, as well as insolvency, which they're all facing right now. So it's a tough call, but I'm hopeful and optimistic as we turn the corner here in the next month or so. You know, let's hope we're starting to see our parks open up again, starting to see people come into Montana, but we got to be looking at the data.
Got it. Well, thank you, Senator, very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. It's great being with you all.
Thank you, Senator. And I have to give a shout out. You probably don't get enough thank yous. And we did get a listener that just sent a thank you in. They wanted to thank you for your leadership in cosponsoring the Great American Outdoors Act. So she's a very reputable, you know, local here and said, thank you for your work there.
Well, thanks. And just the commercial for that, so everybody knows what that is, that does two things. It addresses the backlog maintenance in the national parks, which is about twelve billion dollars. Get in there and catch up. Our national parks are fraying at the edges in so many places. So that's one thing. But the other part is it fully funds at nine hundred million dollars a year, the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Makes it mandatory funding, fully funds it, nine hundred million dollars a year forever on that. And that's great news. And I hope we can get that passed here soon. The President Trump says he'll sign it. He says, get it on my desk, I'll sign it. So we got that part sealed with him. Now we've got to get it through Congress. I think we've got good bipartisan support. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your work there, and thank you for your time. Very generous and appreciate it, and hope to see you at that football game this fall.
There's only one team to root for.
All righty.
I just found it all the Grizzlies, I know that, but.